City Council meeting for Monday, April 2nd. We call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Will you please stand and join me in Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Looks like we got winter back again, huh? Can't wait. Huh? Yes. I am, I think I'm wintered out this year.
No kidding?
Nate, will you call Row, please?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Councilmember Rowe, I believe, is out of, for sure, out of the state. He's going to be out of the country, so he's not here at this point with us, so he will not be joining us. Next, we'll do item number four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, how to entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
On second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. That will move us on to visitor presentation. And I know we have a few people here. I have first the State of the Library report from Heidi. And Janet, is it Karas? Karas?
Karas.
Karas. Karas, Karas.
Yes.
Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Oops. Okay. Slideshow. Well, I love coming every year to talk to you people about the library, your library, because I love my job. And it's, I love my job because it's exciting. There's always exciting things that are going on, especially at the Chaska Library. Your library is located in the county seat, and as such, a lot of different people come to live in Chaska. And they love it here, and they love coming to the library and utilizing their library well. And so we make sure that as a member of the Carver County Library System, they get as many services as possible because they deserve it. The Carver County Library System is really one library with multiple branches throughout the county itself. And as one library with multiple branches, we're able to utilize our funding, pool it together so that we can get you more for your dollar. With multiples, you actually get savings, cost savings. Now, the city of Chaska maintains the building and electricity, et cetera, while the services are provided by the county. However, we also, as Carver County, as a member of a regional library system, MELSA Metropolitan Library Services Agency, are able to provide you with even more. We're able to provide you with a base of eBooks. We're able to provide you with databases. We're able to provide you with promotional materials and information, a whole plethora of things. So you get more for your money by working together. You also get the opportunity to borrow materials from across the state and beyond. So it's your tax dollars at work, and working in a very strategic way to give you the most possible resources. This last year, we started our strategic planning for the next five years. We held a lot of meetings, a lot of, with a lot of organizations, a lot of interviews with community members throughout the county. I think at the end, we had eighty-two community members who had given us individual interviews, as well as, I can't even remember how many organizations to whom I spoke, to find out where they wanted library services to go. And we took that information. We had a strategic planning task force. And working on the county pattern of communities, culture connections, finances, and growth, they decided that we weren't going to be talking about what our values were because that focused back on us as staff. We were going to make promises to our community. We at Carver County Library promised to be a welcoming and accessible space, to offer the best customer service possible, to maintain a well-trained staff, to provide quality resources reflecting different points of view, to be a force in the community, to be inspiring and innovative, and to promote literacy and the joy of reading, all of which are right on your annual report in front of you. It talks a little bit about how we got there, but on the inside, you're going to see all of those promises and how we developed those promises this past year. And for those of you who are bottomliners, what are the stats? We gave you an overview of some of the stats. For example, we had five hundred, five thousand eight hundred seven people that visited the libraries this last year.
That's countywide?
That's countywide. We had almost a million in total circulation for those Victoria Desk consults. That's when they call in and ask to have a half hour to two hours with one person trying to understand and learn their computers, their software, whatever. If you look at that number, six hundred sixty, with the amount of time that's spent with individuals, it's wonderful, especially when they're enabled to use their computers later. But the bottom line, the figures, don't tell the whole story. To tell the whole story, we need to tell you Carver County Library stories that happened this last year. Like the young teen who came to the United States from Somalia who spoke no English. Two months in, he realized that he had to start learning English somehow. He came to the library, started using our Transparent Languages database, and now he comes up to the staff and gives them a greeting, uses the new words he's learned that week. And he always does that with a big smile on his face. Or the homebound user who loved music, and she didn't have any music in her nursing home, and she really wanted music. We paired her up with a volunteer who brought her CDs each week, and she found she was starting to move when she was sitting on her bed. And then she started using her walker and moving to the music. And now she moves within her room without any, any help at all from a walker or from the bed. She's just built up enough strength in her legs so she can move by herself. But the most important thing, she told her volunteer who brings her this music, is that she's lost five pounds. Or the mother and daughter who came in with a school assignment. You know those school assignments? They need three print resources. Well, they had gotten two, and it was the day before the paper was due, as sometimes happens with our children. It certainly did with my boys. And they needed one more source. They came into the library, and the librarian said, "Did you know that we have a digitized book called Primary Sources, and you can get a biography about this person there?" And they got it. The mother was so relieved. The student went home and wrote her paper. It was all great. Or the woman who just lost her job. And there, we happened to be having a seminar at one of our libraries from the Extension Office on budgeting. And she came to that, and she felt that there were things she could do. And so she went up, and she felt good enough to go up and talk to the Extension educator. And the educator gave her phone numbers and people to contact. And she felt she had a game plan that she could go on, that she could make it. Or the gentleman who was diagnosed with brain cancer, who came to the library because his doctor said, "You know, if you play games, it can help your brain keep vital as long as possible, at least." I can't tell you it'll cure cancer, because it won't, but it'll keep your brain as active as possible, and you'll be as happy as possible till the end. He came in and he said, "I suppose you don't rent out games here." And the librarian said, "Well, actually, we have brain fitness kits. There are four games within a kit, and you can check it out for free." So he checked out one kit, and he went out grumbling. Came back, checked out another kit, went out grumbling. Came back, checked out another one, and another one. He found that he not only was, was learning things and feeling good about himself, but he was having a great time with his grandchildren as he was playing these games. And he kept checking out right up until he died. But he had a great time, and we can't always determine when we're going, how long we're going to live on earth, but we can determine how good a life we're going to live until that time. Or the story of the homeschooling mom who, whose daughter was not very happy with her that, that her, his, her daughter was being homeschooled. Her mom insisted on her being homeschooled. So the mom took her to the library to get some fun books to read, not just the school books. And, and the daughter couldn't believe how, how many books there were for her that she liked at the library. And suddenly, she really started working hard at her homeschooling because if she got her assignments done and got them done correctly, she got to read some of her library books. So her mother felt that she had really turned a corner because of the library. Now, those are general stories from across the county from this past year. But what about the stories that are representative specifically of what's been happening at Chaska this last year? I'm going to turn it over to Janet Karas to tell you those.
Well, I am going to give you some of the highlights from the Chaska Library. But I want to really point out to you that the Chaska Library is convenient. Many library users look up on the library catalog, whether it's on the website or on an app, books or audiobooks or DVDs. And when they find the one they want, they hit the request button, and then they come into the library and they pick out the desired materials on the reserve shelf. And checking out library materials has become easier and quicker since we've put RFID tags into all of the materials. You can now just put a stack of materials on this pad. You can scan your library card. And now, as of, I think, this week even, you can take a picture of your library card on your smartphone and scan your phone, and you're done. You're good to go. The Chaska Library is equipped. A good number of people come to the Chaska Library to get their business done, whether it's personal or professional, whether they're interacting with the level of government. They use our equipment, whether they're scanning, faxing, making copies, accessing the internet through one of our library computers, or using the Wi-Fi. We have updated equipment and helpful staff. Yes, the Chaska Library puts a lot of high value on being helpful. In 2017, we added a help desk. Here's Scott Davis, one of our library technology associates. You can find on most Mondays in the Chaska Library. He's available to our library users with their technology questions. And many of you are familiar with our Master Gardener Help Desk. In the summertime, from ten to one on Saturdays, we have a Master Gardener there to answer questions. And this year, we're going to add the month of May. So Saturdays in May, they're, they'll also be there. And the Chaska Library, we're staying fresh. We got a fresh coat of paint. Thank you, city. You provided the paint for us. We got a new display unit on wheels, and we got some new couches and chairs on wheels, particularly in our chat, in our children's area. And we were sprucing ourselves up for our busy, busy time, our busy, active children's area. We have a picture of Music Storytime, one of our summer performances. And then we also had a robotics team from a local school that had come. So we really do use that area. And we're still adding new features to the Chaska Library. We have, with the help of our Carver County Public Health Department, we were able to equip our study rooms with curtains and also door signs that would help make these rooms appropriate as lactation rooms for breastfeeding moms. And I want to end by pointing out that even though we have some space challenges, we do our best to make our Chaska Library a place to learn. We've been busy, we arrange our furniture in the fireplace area. We squeeze our folks into that valley room to accommodate classes on Google Docs, Android devices. And now we have some classes that are offered by University of Minnesota Extension Educators. We have one in particular on financial capability. And as Heidi was mentioning, the story of the person who had attended one of the budgeting classes, this educator does on budgeting, credit, and banking. And if you look in your schedule of upcoming Chaska classes, we are going to have one on how to rent wisely. So with that, did Heidi refer to you? No. Where you would like to take any questions or comments that you?
I don't know. I, I, thank you for sharing all these stories and the numbers. I, the numbers always kind of, I'm probably the person you put that in there for because it does kind of floor me a little bit, the usage. Because I thought library, and I think I've had this conversation with you, that library usage would go down, and instead it's going up. So, and obviously, most people know that we're looking at trying to build a new library with a lot more space, three times more space, hopefully, and then some. So we're going to continue moving forward on that. And we have our next meeting the end of this month, right?
Right, the twenty-fifth.
So, so we're working on it. We realize the importance of the library, and we want to keep that. And we certainly want to keep it here. And we, but we also know that it needs to be bigger to be able to do your programming. And I think it holds you back on programming if, if I understand everything, so, because you don't have the room for it, so. But.
It's, it's very small for a city of this size, so we do want to definitely.
Hopefully, we can, you know, put all that together. So you guys know there's a lot of pieces and parts of that to make that work, but.
I would have never thought five hundred and, almost five hundred and six thousand visitors a year. That's amazing for such a small library. That's incredible.
The numbers are fascinating, but I love the stories, the personal stories as well. That was interesting.
Thanks for sharing all that. Definitely kind of puts a lot of things in perspective, so.
How did your 3D printing program work in the last year? Yeah, last year, you presented to us, you talked about you recently added a 3D printer at one of your sites.
We have the 3D printing program, several programs each quarter that are at our Victoria Library. One of the things with the new administrator coming on is I'm hoping that we can get a tech-on-the-go class so that we might be able to get a 3D printer that's a little heartier, that can stand being cased up and going to our various libraries to at least demonstrate what is possible. And then to advertise that we have ongoing programs in 3D that people can attend at the Victoria Library, which is centrally located, and so on. We are hoping, however, I will say, that when we open our new Chaska Library, that we will have more automated pieces of equipment that are there, maybe 3D printer, but maybe some other things. We've had requests for other types of equipment as well. And if we can get enough of the meeting rooms, program rooms, then we'd be able to do that and offer some unique experiences.
Cool. Very good.
All right.
Thanks again for coming in. We'll see you at the next meeting. All right, anyone else in our visitor presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm John Siegfried at 110-696 Wally Road, number 105, here in Chaska. And I want to talk this evening about an issue that seems to be somewhat difficult to proceed through. And this has to do with the improvement to a project at 220 Chestnut Street in Chaska, next to Wally Sports. Been trying to figure out how to improve that property so that it would be a benefit to the city and bring additional traffic to the city. So I was able to recruit, or Katie Barton found me, I found her somehow. Anyway, she's interested in putting a revive nutrition business in there through the Herbalife program, where they are looking at all kinds of nutritional programs and so on. So the main roadblock that we've run into, of course, has to do with the issue of the Metropolitan Council sewer and water access charge, charges. And we got a SAC calculation back that, with some basics that were in error, actually, or assumptions that were in error, and we came back with a charge of .71 through their calculations, and what that works out to is one SAC unit. And I was able to finally determine that zero is a whole number because their criteria was, is that the SAC calculation would either go up or down to the nearest whole number. And as it turns out, that zero is a whole number. I did get that confirmation from the SAC technician that did the calculation. So right now, they calculated .71 was the calculation, which would round up to one SAC charge. But if we were able to resubmit and change some things, maybe we could stay under that .50, and then it would go back down to zero SAC units. And that makes a tremendous difference as to the overall cost of permitting from Met Council and also from the great city of Chaska. So that just came in today, that confirmation. I asked numerous people, is zero a whole number or not? Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so, but it's been confirmed it is a whole number. It can be rounded down to zero if it's under .49. So moving right along here, that's kind of the plan going forward is to revise the layout so that it would qualify for zero SAC charges. And we would like to resubmit to the Met Council Environmental Services so that we could be able to reduce the costs of starting to do business there, either for the tenant or myself as the building owner. So we would like to see if at all possible, being that dealing with the Met Council is a timely procedure, they don't make decisions all that rapidly. The question would be whether or not we could get a building permit through the city of Chaska without having SAC charges be redefined. If we could, in fact, just be able to complete the project and get this young lady into business, and then deal with resubmission and rediscussion, re-contact with Met Council, that would be the request at this time. So I would like to put that out to the City Council for their consideration. So that's, in a nutshell, what this is about. So any questions from the council?
I mean, obviously, we're, we are not in a position here to make that kind of decision tonight. And, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to that. So it's definitely something that we'll have Nate take back and talk to the building officials and find out what it is. I, I have a feeling, gut tells me, that it's probably not, probably not going to happen. Because, well, it's just one of those that, what happens if there's a debate? This thing could drag on for a long time, or, you know what I mean? But I'm just saying, it's just a gut. I have no idea. And we'll let, I gotta let Nate take it back.
Yeah.
And Matt will be back tomorrow as well, and can have those discussions on, you know. No good deed goes unpunished. I've learned that for a long, long time in life.
Yeah.
And it sounds very good, and I, you know, I, I'd love to say absolutely, let's go with it. But we got to make sure that, one thing that we try to do here is be fair in, in everything that we do, and not try to give one person a favor and not the next. So we're going to follow what we've done in the past, and we just really need to look into that and find out if there's something that's going to hurt us if we did do it. Or maybe we have cases where we've done it. I just don't know. That's, the building officials would have to look at that. But we'll certainly take that consideration, bring it to them, and, and I don't know about the timelyness of an answer.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would just say that, you know, first off, you know, John and I met earlier today and sort of talked through things, and it sounds like the discussion has changed. You learned some more information.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's changed from when you and I talked this morning.
That's fantastic, I think you've got good news there in that you've got some opportunity to look at your plans and hopefully avoid, you know, that SAC charge. So that's, that's a big piece. But that does change, you know, what was submitted for, for approval for your building permit earlier. And so I think my suggestion would be that, you know, come on back tomorrow, and let's take a look at, you know, where things are at and what your plans are going forward to avoid that SAC charge. And then we can bring our building officials into that discussion and, and figure out the best path forward. You know, maybe there's an opportunity that they can at least allow you to get to work on some of the internal improvements of the building while you're looking, you know, for that determination on the SAC fee, but that should be a discussion with the building permit staff and figuring out what's the best path forward there. So, yeah, it's a great, I think that's great news, and that's great, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a lot of progress from when you and I talked.
I was, I can tell you, I called out, you know, three or four different staff at the Met Council after you and I talked today to try to get to that same question that you, you got an answer on, and I didn't hear back from them, so you had more success than I did.
You don't want to, you should talk to Greg, you should talk to Greg Osterdike on the concern that he had with, over the SAC and WAC charges that he battled for a long time and never got anywhere. You've already gotten way further.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate those comments. Yeah, I can meet with the Assistant Administrator tomorrow and/or the Administrator and get some more direction, of course. There are some other programs, there's SAC deferral, potentially SAC charges put on, an assessment against property, things of that nature. So we want to keep moving forward with this project. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Katie Barton. She's the business developer here, and.
Hey, guys.
Hi, welcome.
My name is Katie Barton. So my business, I'm, obviously, this is the first time I've opened a business like this. I've been working out of 21 and Savage, and I worked at one in, in Prairie, and I kind of decided to venture off into my own. I lived in the downtown Shakki location for a while, and I just, I really wanted to pick an area that had the downtown feel. And I believe Chaska is the place. And I think it is an amazing place to start up a business. So that's, with everything that worked out, I found John, John found me. And it's not moving forward as quickly as I wanted to know, which was great. I was waiting for this moment for stuff to get sticky, and it's getting sticky. And I'm a really determined person to get, to get stuff done and get this place open and to bring something fresh and new into the Chaska location, especially something that I'm really passionate about. and to bring something fresh and new into the Chaska location, especially something that I'm really passionate about, health, nutrition, and fitness. And I think it's gonna be an amazing, amazing addition to downtown Chaska location. It's just a matter of going through the steps that we need to go through to get, to get the ball rolling. We're kind of in that midst right now with construction where we need the permits to move forward further. So that's kind of where we're sitting in limbo. And the prices, now that I'm hearing of these charges that I guess I was unaware of, of the water and sewer hookup and stuff like that, it was just kind of like, a little bit, a little bit taken back from that. So, um, so it's just all stuff that's, that, that we have to work through. But anything that I can do to make, to make this go quicker, anybody, anybody that I need to be in contact with or, I don't know. That's why we're here today. It was just to introduce myself and let you know what I'm all about and I'm bringing some good stuff to the downtown Chaska location. So, welcome to downtown Chaska.
Nice to have the site back in Chaska. He was there for a while and then, uh, he moved his, oh, no, he traded it to someone else, took over and then she moved it up to Chaska Commons area and just closed it.
Yeah, that's what I heard. And so, uh, yeah, I'm really, really excited about it. I'm in a lot of the, like, the Facebook social media threads, so I'm just really trying to make it aware that we're back. Yeah, that we're back and, and people are already calling to like, see if I'm open. And I'm like, no, but we're gonna be open soon, I promise. Um, so, yeah, it's just a matter of getting those permits in our hand and.
Yeah, those are, that's probably the, one of the tougher ones to get, is work with that.
What I'm noticing, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And, and for anybody at home that's wondering what we're talking when we say SAC and WAC, we're not crazy. But, uh, so SAC is sewer access.
Access, charge.
And water is water access.
Charge.
So it's something that whenever you, a building opens up, it goes by how much water usage you will and that determines the water and the sewer and the WAC, the WAC and SAC charge. So that's what we're talking here. Try not to confuse people when we're sitting here talking these acronyms and nobody knows at home, what are they talking about?
Is the state permit still an issue as well? Because when John called me, it was, he was talking about the state permit and the Metro Council.
Yeah, so, well, it's, yeah, the Metropolitan Council determines the number of SAC units that a particular business needs to purchase. And so we tie our water access charges and our sewer access charges to the Met Council's determination. So they're kind of tied together in that way. If there's a state approval, I don't, maybe that has to do with being a food-oriented business or something.
There's four. One is the State Health Department, one is the State Agricultural Department, one is the Metropolitan Council, and one is known as your local Chaska permitting. So there's four, so we have the Health Department and the Agricultural Department. And now we have some fairly good news from the Met Council, now we're waiting on the city of Chaska.
Yep. So I think, yeah, you know, the path forward that we discussed a little bit ago, just come back when you've got your, your plans reconfigured based on what you learned from the Met Council. And I think, you know, we can, we can take a look at what the building permit process will be based on that and get you through the process as quick as we can. So I work a lot with the downtown business groups and I think, you know, once you're starting to get up and running, we can connect you with Downtown Business Alliance and, and that group and they help with promotion and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I join the chambers, I'm pretty excited about that.
That's good, yeah, they help with that.
Yeah.
And we've got the, the sign grant program here at the city too. So once you're looking at your sign, you know, it doesn't hurt to be proactive in looking at that as well and try to maximize your ability to get those funds too. So there's, there's plenty of things that we can help you out with.
So do we have to actually, like, if we have plans drawn out and, you know, we submit them to Met Council, do we have to actually wait on hearing back from them till we can maybe do something with a permit from you guys?
I, I would recommend, once you've got your plans drawn out, to just, to bring them in. You know, the Met Council can look at their thing and that gives us an opportunity to look and see what you're doing and then we can react to that. So we really can't, we can't permit anything until we see what that thing is.
It can't be a partial permit.
So, yeah, so bring it in and we can get you started.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, welcome.
Good luck.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully, we can get through this process.
Tell Joe I said hey.
We will, it'll be good. And you all, we at the club, right?
All right, is there anyone else in their visitor presentation? Last call. All right, we'll move on to item six, approving minutes of the March 19th council meeting. Discussion, if not entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve the matter.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I'll second that, but then I do have some discussion.
Second, my Councilmember Bo, discussion.
Uh, so who's taking notes tonight? Nate?
Yep.
Okay. I noticed agenda item number eight, the minute said that I asked if there would be enough room in the dumpster structure for garbage and recycling. And actually, I asked if there would be enough room for garbage, recycling, and organics because the state is really starting to push for organic food scrap collection to keep it out of the solid waste stream and out of the landfills. And so since we'll have a couple of, you know, restaurants or we'll have a grocery store in Chipotle there, my guess is, and Starbucks too, with the coffee grounds coming out, it'd be great to have an organics receptacle in there for that kind of material to be captured and sent off to be composted rather than going off as trash, so.
Okay, we can make that clarification.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it, thanks.
Anyone else?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves on to item number seven, which is consent agenda. And again, for anyone that doesn't know, consent are items that need our approval but not necessarily conversation. But we can if we opt to have a question on something. With that.
I do want to point out, one item, since we've got a rep in the, in the audience tonight, Mark Gross is owner of Forma Coat. So he's looking at the Building Center site and doing a project there that would bring, you know, a good number of, a good number of jobs. He's, he's still refining the numbers and things, but there's, you know, high paying, well, good jobs. And Forma Coat does coatings on guide wires for medical devices. So it's, you know, a very, very interesting product that they're putting out and it's within that, you know, medical device field that we like to see having operate here in the city. And so we're excited about the project and this is one item of support towards, towards that, him pursuing some state dollars to help propel this project along the road, so.
The job creation fund application?
That's the job creation fund, correct, yep.
I love the fact in the staff report that it says it's been his lifelong dream to move his business to Chaska.
Very good. We like that dream.
I know, it's great, yeah. You have to, why don't you? Okay, I'll go to, I'll go to discussion now that Nate jumped in front of me. Now, now, as long as you're here and we're excited to have you here as well. That's been a long-going site that we have hope for development and I really think that getting one more there is gonna kick the rest off, so we're excited. But introduce yourself.
Sure, I'm, I'm Mark Gross and I actually moved to Chaska with Lifecore Biomedical when they moved.
Oh, sure.
And my goal at the time was to always live and work in the same city. And, you know, that worked pretty good for a while with Lifecore, but then, you know, it's time to move on. And then I went to Lake Region Manufacturing and that was only good for a couple of years for me. And then I started my business Forma Coat and we ended up in Savage.
Darn, it was a long way away from Chaska.
Cause whoever gets in the way.
But it helps you appreciate Chaska more.
Well, this is true, yes, yes. But I did work with, with Carver County for about a year and a half, about a decade ago, to try and build a medical device or a business incubator. And it just wasn't the time.
Yeah.
And, but now, now things are looking much better all around and the, this piece of land in particular appeals to me and, and.
It's a great site.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
So I'm doing soil boring, so I was kind of excited to see.
Pardon?
I saw him doing soil, soil bories.
Yep.
So that meant, that's always a step closer.
Yep.
It's kind of exciting for me to see, so.
Yep, so, so anyway.
Fabulous. And it's a good workforce out here that would work well with that application.
We have a number of medical device kind of companies in the area. It's better to keep growing that kind of concentration.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Well, thank you and hopefully we'll welcome your new business soon.
Hopefully so, we got lots of things to do, but, but Nate's doing a good job for us.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And, and while we're in discussion, I do have one for Mr. Clark, maybe? And the bids for 41, which I know were just a small piece of that. It had McCrossen, it says they were 100% under, but they didn't get it. Is there something there I'm missing or is that just maybe a misbrand?
I believe it was an incomplete bid.
I can't hear what?
I believe it was incomplete.
Oh, okay. All right. I just, I just thought it was kind of strange that they were the number one, but they weren't, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, if they were incomplete, they're incomplete. That's the number one thing you gotta do, right? Complete your bid. Okay, any other discussion?
Well, glad to see 41, you know, continuing to move forward.
I look forward to it, but I absolutely.
Well, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a painful period, but, yeah.
But it'll be good when it's done.
And Quinn, a question for you. As a Lions Club member, do I have to recuse myself because of item C and the liquor license vote?
Billy, you've never had to in the past.
I know, it just occurred to me and we've got someone new to ask here, so.
I think that would be one where if you feel you can be impartial in making that decision.
Okay.
Uh, because you have no direct financial benefit.
Exactly.
And, and, right, I, I think it's whether you can put your own views aside or if you can treat it like anyone else, who would be applying for liquor license?
Very good, okay, thank you. And there is no direct financial gain or anything like that, thank you.
When we get through this, I think I'm just gonna have you introduce who you are.
That's a good idea.
You have a new face, but I want to finish this motion out and then we'll just kind of slide you in there. Okay, any further discussion?
No, motion to approve. Do we have it?
Did I already have that?
I don't think we did.
Oh, yeah.
I did not have that.
No, we didn't, no, that was on the list.
Oh, I thought we were there, I'm sorry.
That was six that I had jumped in after for further discussion.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Bo now.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to approve consent. Any more discussion? I think we pretty much hammered that out.
Yeah, I think we've hammered it down.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Carries. We're just gonna jump over, we have a, a stand-in city attorney for us tonight. We haven't, I don't think we've ever had that in the past.
Probably not.
So just, if you would, just introduce yourself and say who you're with and your name and that's all you gotta do.
Sounds good.
That'd be the idea.
My name is Quinn O'Reilly. I am a new, I'm a new attorney with Melkert Hubert Shadine. And so I'm gonna be working a lot in the municipal section. And so Luke, who is normally sitting here, is someone I will be working very closely with. And I've worked with him in the past before, starting with Melkert Hubert Shadine. I was with the League of Minnesota Cities for just over two years in the research department. So I've been answering a lot of questions, including many questions from City Attorney Melkert before joining the firm. So I have a lot of experience in the municipal law area and I'm excited to get going and get more involved in kind of the weeds of municipal law.
Very good, awesome, thank you. Thank you, welcome.
Quinn was the lead author of our brewery ordinance, so that we'll be able to use in short order here, so.
Very good.
All right, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight. Matt's already chomping at the bit. This is the public improvement hearing, adopt resolution 2018-34, opening, ordering the 2018 street utility, excuse me, reconstruction project authorized in preparation of construction document and establishing a public assessment hearing.
All right, Mayor, Councilmembers, I'll, I'll introduce this one and Matt's hoping I'm gonna do the bulk of the talking for him tonight, so. He loves to get up in front of the camera, we all know that. So this is an item for us to go out and continue work towards that street reconstruction project for downtown this year. As you can see in the red, what's highlighted for the project is that section of Fourth Street that basically starts at the Co-op building there and heading over towards where, where the road terminates at the Carver County Office Building. We've also got a portion of Ass Street there, go heading to the north. Then we've got Maple Street, one block heading south and a little chunk of Fifth that you see highlighted with the red as well. So that's the portion that we're looking at. What, what we're talking about tonight is to get out for bid in the construction documents and establishing that public hearing that needs to occur for the assessments to, to complete this project as it was described to you all on February 5th at the meeting and, and more detailed by Matt at that point in time. There has been some changing to timing, which Matt's gonna talk about a little bit for the project, but we also, you know, at the same time, recognize that this is a, timing's gonna be of the essence on this one since we are dealing with a school that's right there.
Multiple schools.
We have multiple schools, St. John's and the Co-op, you're right. So we do need to have that timing as a priority on this project so that we're not, you know, disrupting or at least limiting the disruption to that critical access that needs to occur. So Matt, if you wanted to add that.
Yeah, so just to give a kind of a quick update, where we're at in the process now and, and council is very familiar with this is, tonight is the public improvement hearing. The next step would be for us to, for council to basically order the assessment, or order the assessment hearing. With our wonderful snowfall events and things like that, we have already had our neighborhood meetings. So folks have been notified of the project and we've gone through it with everybody in terms of the same presentation that was given to council before. As we all know, the last meeting was canceled because of snow and we all almost enjoyed the luxury of more snow today. But basically, what you see in front of you is what we had listed for the overall project schedule. And this was a part of the feasibility study that was prepared. The changes that you can see, and forgive my penmanship because I did this this afternoon, but the schedule had basically us having the assessment hearing tonight. That has been since shifted to the April 30th meeting. From that point, it kind of triggers the process for us in terms of following, following state statute and the timeline a lot means for the way the city needs to proceed. Right now, if you look at the schedule, the big question item was how quickly we could award a project. What you'll see is that based on the timing, the June 4th is what we have anticipated or what is set based on the new schedule, okay? This project had always, or still always has, the intent is finishing Fourth Street so that school busing and school activities can go on. Staff still feels that task is achievable. We just may not have the road paved like we had originally envisioned, but still attainable to try and make streets open as quickly as possible. And so that gives you, hopefully that explains better as to where we're at in the process. Like I had mentioned in the meetings that we have had with folks, we went through basically the trees and all of the utility upgrades and basically the nature of the improvements as well as the assessments. And so everybody.
Matt, can you flip back?
Yep.
So if we were gonna have the public assessment hearing tonight, is there a way we could do it on the 16th?
There is a, on the 16th, for us to have the, you're talking authorizing the assessment hearing? So there's a notification period that the city is required to meet from when we actually order, authorize, or schedule the assessment hearing. And that falls, unfortunately, it falls in an off week, which moves us out to the 30th.
So we're having a meeting on the 5th Monday then?
Yep.
Okay. I just was wondering if we were missing something here that we were missing.
Doesn't have to be published like three times or something in the paper?
Yes, it has to be officially noticed.
Three weeks of publication.
Yeah, two official publications, two in the Chaska.
All right.
Just to go through again, this year's project, I think we talked about it before, it's a little over 2.1 million. And we did talk about the assessments in our last meeting. Again, the assessments are not part of tonight's discussion, but it should be noted that we've shared this with the property owners and things. I did go back and look at the previous slide or the previous information that we had sent out in terms of the assessment role. There has been a change. There are three properties that are proposed to be assessed along Maple Street that I had made a mistake on previously and those, the property owners have been notified. Specifically, this would be the St. John's School. And so following the city's policy about how we've levied assessments in the past in terms of the streets that abut in front the improvements, these three lots would be eligible.
So now, they will be assessed this year or not till next year when it's in front?
Will be assessed this year. So what you're seeing on, in the exhibit would be the lot that's down next to Maple Street and the two which would qualify as. and the two which would qualify as residential lots along.
Cause I, I noticed that was not in here, because that's a question I had been getting about, about that. They're saying that there was one lot of St. John's, and I go, I don't think so.
No, it was my mistake.
So, okay. So then what we have in here was not right either, cause it didn't show any names.
Feasibility report, we would not have, or unless, the assessment role that you have seen is up to date. So it should be current based on what's in the packet today. With that, again, tonight is the public improvement hearing. I wanna open it up to anybody else, but if council has any questions, the project still remains the same. Nothing has changed from what was prepared with the, presented with the original feasibility study.
Okay. Questions up here before I open? I mean, like I said, this is what, year ten?
Covered.
Yeah.
I think we're, got a pretty good handle on.
Kind of pretty consistent in how we approach it.
It's been very consistent, so.
Changes the parade, right?
So this is a public improvement hearing, so I do open it, okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. So we're good up here? All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public assessment hearing at seven fifty. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this project?
Just to clarify, public improvement hearing, not the assessment hearing.
Not a what?
Not the assessment hearing. It is the public improvement hearing.
I'm sorry, public improvement hearing?
Yes.
But I'll still open it up at seven fifty, though. With a clarification in there. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Last call. All right, the magic of time, we'll go to seven fifty-one, and we'll close the public hearing. And, so now, in this, we have to add the April thirtieth date as the public assessment hearing.
Yes.
Correct?
That would be correct. The thirtieth is, what's in, what's in the action item is the correct date.
Okay. Yep. All right. So with that, I'd entertain a motion. I'll make that motion. Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to establish a, a public assessment hearing for April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM at the Chaska City Hall Council Chambers. Luke, make sure I say all those things. I have to say those. So you're supposed to be nodding to say, yes, I'm saying all the right things. All right, discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Matt, I noticed they're all, all the assessments are the same, except one's larger, which is the school, but one is smaller than the rest, and why is that?
We had talked about before was, there was a previous assessment that was done along when the Government Center was completed. There were street improvements, as well as upgrades to the water main and things that happened back in the early, late nineties. And so what that credit is, is basically applied to the street improvements that were previously assessed.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks. And that's kind of basically a corner lot, you can only assess them on one street, correct?
The way our policy is, basically, is the, the utilities drive the terms of when the assessments fall for these particular properties. The benefit is really the derivative of what it is that we levy for assessments, not if they're on a corner lot or anything. It's strictly driven by the benefit.
Okay. Okay. Wright?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Before I go on, the next thing, there is someone else here in the audience that's kinda new to us. Mr. Wright, if you'd like to come up here and just, real quick, introduce yourself. I, I kinda think you're probably here to see what we do.
Yeah. So, a little shocked there. That's good, wake you up a little bit.
Fall asleep.
Yeah, right, yeah, so nod and down, so, yeah, no, my name's Kevin Wright, for those that don't know me. Just started here first of March, so it's crazy that a month's already gone by. Already had a council meeting canceled on me in my first month on, on the job, so it was fun to kind of put that notice out, but I'm the communications manager here at the city, so happy to be on board. Was able to work closely with a lot of the different departments when I was working at the Ryder Cup back in two thousand sixteen, which doesn't seem that long ago, but happy to be back and kind of be on this side of the table, and kind of enjoying my first council meeting as well, so.
You need to get out more.
What's that?
You need to get out more.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, I, I did, I will say.
This one's fun, you just wait.
I will say that I am probably currently missing, oh, it hasn't started yet, but I did go to the University of Michigan, so. Big game tonight, so.
Was there a game tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, anytime you wanna, anytime, you were, you were recognized now, you can sneak out now.
Yeah, oh, there we go, yeah.
The camera will be watching, but, you know, you can still go.
So, Mr. Wright was the operations manager of the twenty sixteen Ryder Cup, and then he took over and went and became operations of the Super Bowl. So he's used to dealing with people a little bit, so hopefully he'll continue right on dealing with that here.
Absolutely.
Officially from the council, welcome, and thanks for being here tonight, so.
Welcome.
Anytime you wanna sneak out, we won't acknowledge you. All right, trying to move this along. Item number nine is public improvement hearing for adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-five, ordering the Bavaria Downs Improvement Project.
All right. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll introduce this one as well, and Matt can pick up any slack I leave behind, but this is for the Bavaria Downs Project, the, the new wedding and event center that's being planned out for that location out there. We've been through this project a number of times as well. They've, they've achieved the, the planning approvals for the project, and we've got an abatement, you know, helping with the costs of these public improvements that need to happen for this project as well. What they need to do is extend water service out to the site in order to provide for fire suppression in particular, for, for the wedding and event center that they're going to be building out there, and also some turn lanes to Bavaria Road to allow for the adequate access on that site. So what we're doing tonight is we're ordering that water main and road turn lane improvement project, and we're scheduling a public assessment hearing because they are going to be assessed for the cost of these public improvements to the site. So the assessment agreement is in place, the abatement agreement is in place. This is just one more step in that process to, you know, complete this project that we've already talked about, so.
The next step?
Yep, yep, exactly. So if there's any questions, we can help answer that.
So, I mean, this is basically, we're just talking about how they're gonna bring the mains in, and then, and again, this is a, an assessment. Nope. Public improvement hearing.
Yes.
So we're just gonna go through the same thing. And then, and then we're gonna, you're gonna tell me a date when we're having the actual one. I'm getting this gig finally.
Because of the way the assessments are being levied, following the state statute, similar to what we follow for downtown, tonight's discussion, because the city does have a cost participa, participation policy for trunk utilities and for, you know, portion of the roadway improvements, the city is contributing to a portion of this project, which is why we're having a public improvement hearing. One thing I, I will mention, there are two action items, and again, the two tie together. The next item that you'll see, and we might as well discuss it now, is that the city did take bids for the water main improvements last Thursday, and you'll see that as the next, next action item. There are nine bids that were received. We did get very favorable bids on the improvements. Seems to be that that's how things have been going, but nine bids, which was very good. The city is definitely doing a good project. So, again, this would essentially set the area up so that utilities could be extended in the future. This project also does more of the road improvements and things for the long-term picture out on Bavaria, for how area development and how access is really needed to service future area development, so. Just wanted to bring that up for the next action item as well, if you wanted to discuss any of them at the same time.
Oh, so you're saying get them both, have all of our discussion.
No, it's, I just wanted to point that out, if you had any questions.
Cause I, I, I was rather shocked at looking at the bids, the differential. I mean, I know that there's differentials, but this is, this is more than a bid is differentials. I mean, it's, it's good, and Widmer Construction's been around for a long time, so it's not like it's somebody we're not aware of, but man, that is a very favorable bid.
The next to follow, again, just because of the timing and the, the needs for the event center to get the water improvements there, would be planning to open bids, I believe it's next week, for the road improvements, and so council will see that bid award coming for the next council meeting.
So this was just for the water?
Correct.
For the water, yeah.
I was wondering if they were doing both, but, okay. All right. All right. Now, don't I need a date when we're gonna actually do the assessment hearing?
I believe, uh.
It's on April thirtieth as well.
It's on April thirtieth.
Check down. I'm looking at this thing, but I should look at my other thing. Okay, discussion? entertain a motion here. And this is just strictly for the, uh, now, this would be a.
So this is the public improvement hearing?
Yeah, and the date is for the public assessment, right? The April thirtieth?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I know this is the public hearing, but I was trying to remember, drawing a blank. Okay?
Yep, so the motion will be, you know, will establish both essentially through the resolution that you'll be approving tonight.
Well, one, yeah, we're.
Yeah, the action item on would be ordering the improvements, so to set the project in motion, the, and scheduling the assessment hearing for April thirtieth.
Okay.
Can all be done as in one.
What he said. So is there someone willing to make a motion? Excuse me?
Yeah, we, we will have to, yeah, you'll have to open up the public.
Just like we did on the last one.
Oh, that's right, I did, I'm sorry. God, I am off on this one. All right, so discussion good up here?
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at eight oh one for ordering the improvement project for Bavaria Downs. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of that? Yeah, that's right, you're here, you may as well. Get your money for it.
Absolutely.
Mayor Councilmembers, thank you again. I just wanna say thanks to Matt and Nate and working with me. I know weddings and cakes, engineering and lateral lines are not my thing, you know, by traits, so.
But you're learning, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm learning. I'm learning a lot, so.
Have you taught them anything about cakes?
Not yet, but I, I am here, if you know.
I would like to learn how they taste.
Do a tasting at some point. So I just wanna say thank you again for, for working with us and being patient with us as well, especially you, Matt.
Very good.
Yeah, well, it'll be interesting. I hear you got some dates already booked, huh?
Yeah, we have, I think, twenty, twenty-five weddings so far.
Wow.
Really?
That's incredible. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the house.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. All right. So obviously, for the, for a while there, you run intense and temporary stuff enough till you get to that time, correct? Cause we wanna have all these water and stuff in by the time of these dates, will we? Oh, never mind then. Have a seat.
Yep.
I didn't think we'd have all that done.
Put a little panic in there.
Tim's been kind enough to invite me to, to speak with the angry brides if, if the.
I would not wanna be on that side.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather enjoy the cake, I suppose, yeah.
Exactly. I didn't realize they could get it all done that quick, so that's awesome, even better, even better. All right. Anyone else wanna speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at eight oh three, and so now I'm looking for a motion to proceed with the improvements and to set an assessment date of April thirtieth. I'll make that motion. Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Go for it. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to go ahead with the improvements and to set a, a, a public assessment hearing for April thirtieth at seven o'clock at the Chaska City Council Chambers on, yeah, I said April thirtieth.
Yes.
I got everything. All right, discussion. Again, pretty straightforward, just things we gotta do. Wright? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us now to item number ten, adopt resolution in twenty eighteen dash thirty-six, accepting and awarding the contract for the Bavaria Downs trunk water main installation. And we've kinda had that conversation ready. We got very, 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 very favorable bids.
Sure.
So, which is awesome, so if there's really, I'll just open up for discussion. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and throw the curve in and make a motion on adopting resolution twenty eighteen thirty-six.
Motion by Council, Councilmember Schultz.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Bowe to, again, adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-six, accepting the bid for the Bavaria Downs trunk water main installation.
Now, I'll test Nate to see if he's actually awake.
The numbers look good. The numbers look very good.
Can't believe the spread.
Yeah. Biggest spread I've ever seen.
Same here.
You hear us mumbling, our spreads go from two hundred eighty-two thousand to five hundred and sixty-three thousand on a bid.
The same project.
In between there.
So, that's what we're kinda yipping about here, so. All right, last call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Head off to Woodbury. All right, moves us to item number eleven, adopt ordinance number nine forty-eight, amending chapter twelve of the Code of Ordinances, adding article seven transient accommodations, and adopt resolution number twenty, twenty eighteen dash forty, transit, transient accommodations fee schedule.
All right. Mayor, councilmembers, this is an ordinance that staff in the administration department and police department have been working with the city attorney on for a number of months now, that would establish a license for hotel and motel operations in the city. Currently, the, the city doesn't have any sort of licensing structure for these types of businesses. And what we're trying to do is create that licensing in a way that really promotes a more, a closer working relationship between the city and operators of motels and hotels in the city. Part of the reason for that is we're getting more and more interest in the city for new hotel operations. We've had some changes in hotel operations, and, and what we wanna try to do is just lay out expectations in our ordinance in a way, you know, so it's written down, and people understand how we would hope any hotel would, would operate within the city, and then provide, you know, oper, you know, provisions and things that if these expectations aren't being met, that we can work with the hotel owners and operators to make the improvements that we'd like to see for the community. So, you know, at the end of the day, what we're looking for are hotel operations that are, you know, providing, you know, respectable and reliable facilities in the community, and that's what we're trying to promote. And so, how, the way that it operates is we set a three-tier system for hotel and motel operations, and what we're looking at are calls of a criminal nature that are made to the police department that are tied to any given hotel or motel facility in the city as a percentage of total rooms that they're operating. And so what we look at is that first tier would be zero to point two as a percent of total rooms, calls of criminal nature submitted to, to the police department. And an important thing on that, too, is that if the call is placed by the hotel operator, that's not something that's gonna count towards that allocation. It's really calls that are coming from people who are staying at the hotel or neighbors of the hotel. And what we're trying to promote through that is that the, the owner and the manager are being proactive in managing the facility in that, you know, we want them to call in those situations, and we want them to be on top of that and be proactive. In those situations and we want them to be on top of that and be proactive, um, so that we can work, you know, the police department can work with them and, and address those situations in the right way. So, zero to point two, you're a tier one facility, um, as long as you're, you know, operating and you're, and you've got your licensing from the state. And all of that, and you're maintaining that, we're not gonna get in your business at all. Once you get to that point two to point four, then you're considered a level two. And so in that case, we've got some additional things that we're looking at, you know, safety improvements, um, primarily. For the, for the facility that we would be creating a plan of implementation on and this police department would be working with that facility to make sure that those things are being addressed. If they do address that, you know, over time, they could end up going back to a level one again. If they don't address that, uh, they could either remain at a level two or they might heighten up to a level three. At which case, you know, we're looking at additional improvements and enhancements and things to address, you know, this level of, of concern that we've got with the, with the facility and, and if. Get to the point where that level three, those items aren't being addressed and implemented in the way that they need to be, um, they, that operate, you know, that operational location could risk losing their license. Having that revoked, in which case they can't operate. So, in that situation, it's really gonna be by a case-by-case situation, but what we would hope that would be, that would look like would be sort of a temporary revocation of license, at which case I think it's set up to be sixty or ninety days. That they could then reapply for their licensure and hopefully during that time they've addressed the issues, um, and then they could, you know, come back to, to operation again. So that's kinda generally how it works out. What we're looking, you know, there is, there is gonna be a fee, that's the newest thing, I guess, immediate impact. All hotel operations in the city would need to, um, apply for this license. A level one is at three hundred dollars, a level two is at six hundred dollars, a level three is nine hundred dollars. So we do want that escalation in there, um, to promote and sort of as a deterrent, obviously, you don't wanna have those additional, um, requirements on your operation, but you probably also don't want those additional costs on your operation as well, so it's in your interest to work with us. There's also a background check fee for a hundred dollars, so that would be that initial application, um, three hundred dollars for a level one plus that one hundred dollar background check, that's similar to how we operate our, um. Alcohol license structure, there's that additional fee for a background check when that's needed. We don't wanna have to charge for that if it's not needed, and so, if the ownership and management and all that stay the same, um, from year to year, you don't necessarily need to do that background check every year, so we wouldn't have to charge for that. So that's how that works. We have gone and taken the steps to communicate this with all the existing hotel operations in the city. We held a meeting, uh, that we invited them all to attend, and that was, the meeting was scheduled at a time, uh, based on feedback that I did receive from the hotel operators, so, um. Hopefully it was something that was at least an opportunity for them to come to. Oak Ridge did attend and showed up, um, and they gave us some, some good feedback on the ordinance, but by and large, they were very, um, supportive of it and felt like this isn't something that would really impact them other than needing to obtain the license. They saw this as a positive thing and because they see benefit in promoting, um, you know, well-run facilities throughout the community from their perspective, um, you know, for people who are coming to Chaska. You know, being able to count on the fact that there's good hotel operations here that they can rely on, that just kinda helps their business as well. That's kinda how they see that, it's just promoting a good business environment for hotels. They did ask that the fees be, be structured in a way that it's really going towards that, uh, additional police, um, and, you know, administrative costs the city is.
That's fair.
Doing, and it's not just a, you know, a money grab for us, and that's, and that's how we structured it.
I was gonna ask how we, you know, were able to derive these numbers.
Yep, yep.
Based off of the additional calls and the resources needed to have that.
And that's, that's the intent, is that, you know, the hundred dollars is what it costs to run that background check. Um, the three hundred dollars, we feel is reasonable to expect, um, there is gonna be administrative time that needs to be put into processing licenses. Um, the, the police department as a part of this will be producing monthly reports to each of the hotels to show the calls and the types of calls that they've been receiving. So everyone knows where they stand month to month. So there's additional char, you know, cost that goes in staff time to be able to do those sorts of things. As you escalate into it, you know, now we're talking about working closer to identify, you know, what are these additional improvements or, you know, things that you need to be doing to address the concerns that we have, so there's additional staff time that goes into, to doing that and additional presence that needs to happen there. Monitoring of implementation. So that's, you know, where we're getting these charges from, and, you know, thinking about staff time, we really looked at, um, the, uh, the alcohol licensing fees and, and, you know, how we derive those and the amount of staff time and how that, how that relates. So that's, that's the thought process that went into that. Other than that, I was able to speak with the owner of Super Eight, um, and although he wasn't able to attend the meeting that we scheduled, um, he didn't raise any significant concerns in the phone call that I had with him. The other hotel in town would be the Norwood Inn, and I have been providing them information and trying to reach out to them via email and phone, haven't received any feedback from them, um, but. Hopefully they can receive the information I've been trying to provide to their email and phone. I think with that, I guess I'd open it up for any questions that you all have.
And this is a yearly fee, so they could have. I just, I guess I look at it if there's, if there's gonna be a time that you probably have some more issues or maybe summertime, but it's still based on the average of over the year.
Yep, what we're looking at is, is that average, you know, call volume over that year and during the course of a year whether they hit that point two, so. You know, if your call volume is high enough and you hit that, you know, point two calls that qualify, um, you know, before the year is done, um, then we would be having those discussions before the year's.
So you'd start talking with them?
Yep, when they hit that threshold, that's correct.
That's what I didn't know, do you hit, go up and hit that threshold and then you come back down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, like, this structure, um. This is nothing we reinvented, this is being done by, I'm certain, by other cities.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, yeah, we looked, we looked to Brooklyn Park, um, pretty closely, I'm sorry, Brooklyn Center, very closely, and they've got a hotel ordinance in place. So we were, we really looked at that one, and there are others, like, I think Woodbury has, um, a licensing, um, program, and there's, there's a few others throughout the metro that we looked at, um, as a model. In talking with them, they've seen a lot of success with what they've done in that, um, they haven't had hotel operations move to that tier two. Um, and the way, the way that they read that is that it has opened up that dialogue between, you know, the police department and the city in general and the hotel operations. In particular, providing that monthly report, um, you know, that's a useful tool for them to understand what's, what sort of activities going on in their hotel and, um, you know, sometimes folks might not. Even realize what's going on until they see that on paper, so it can be enlightening. I know when we met with, um, Oak Ridge, for example, we, we had the report ready for them, for that meeting, and they really appreciated taking a look at that and, um, you know, found it really interesting and useful, so.
I think it's important to get reimbursed for police calls, et cetera. So licensing will enable that to happen. So we'll be charged to those who aren't getting all the calls, just to the ones who are. So it'll help cut that cost.
There is accountability.
That's good.
I like it.
Right, uh, any other discussions? This isn't any sort of a public hearing, but I don't know if there's anybody here regarding this, okay? Just wanted to offer if there was somebody here that wanted to speak. Um, so, do we need to do both of these or one motion will cover this? We need to do, probably need to do the ordinance and then the, uh, resolution?
Yeah, yep, I think it'd be good to adopt the ordinance and then do the resolution, yep.
So I'll, I'll start with the ordinance, uh, so basically we're changing chapter twelve of the code of ordinances, so.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by council member Bo.
I'll second that.
Second by council member Geisler, uh, again, uh, adopting ordinance nine forty-eight, uh, amending chapter twelve of the code of ordinances. Discussion. Hearing non. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, and now we will do, uh, the adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash forty, transient accommodations fee schedule. Discussion, I think we pretty well had that conversation. Discussion. Alright, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
If they have a motion or something.
Oh geez, Mike goofed up tonight, what is going on? Must be thinking about that Michigan game. Michigan game, that's all I'm thinking about.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, motion by council member Geisler.
Second.
Second by council member Schultz. Adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash forty, uh, the fee schedule. Alright. Last call?
No, I don't think so.
Good. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries, wow, tough night.
I wanna just point out Julie Jenke put a lot of time into pulling this together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Help us out here tonight.
This is good.
Big thanks to Julie.
Thank you.
I think it's good.
Alright, we'll move on to item twelve, bills, anyone? Discussion?
Motion to approve and pay the bills.
Okay, motion by council member Bo.
Second.
Second by council member Schultz to pay the bill, again, discussion? Hearing non, Nate, will you call roll, please?
Yes, council member Schultz?
Yes.
Council member Bo?
Yes.
Council member Geisler?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes. Alright, moves to item number thirteen, other business, council member Schultz.
Nothing.
Council member Bo.
Just thought I'd make an official announcement, I know that there were some articles in the paper, in the Herald a while back about, uh, homes for sale and council members possibly moving and whether they were in the ward or out of the ward, and so, did want to announce it. My wife and I did sell our home of, uh, twenty years and are downsizing, but we did purchase a, another smaller home that is still in ward two, so. I am happy to say that we'll still be living in ward two and, and serving the residents of that fine ward, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Make sure you let Denise know that, that she can change that.
Yep, I will do that, thank you.
So that somebody's not confused, so.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Is that it?
Yep, that's all I have, thank you.
Council member Geisler.
After our last meeting, it was publicly announced that we're getting the rider cut back in twenty twenty-eight, I'm sure nobody's heard about that. So twice in ten years, so, twice in a lifetime. Exciting news.
The first time that's happened in the United States, yes.
Yeah, they said they've never returned to the same one within a ten-year.
Just in the US, though.
Oh, just in the US. Overseas they did?
Europe done that twice over there, I think.
Two different courses have had it multiple times.
And they'll have an official announcement coming out.
Oh, what was it?
I think.
I heard April tenth, I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, April tenth.
Nothing's been said to us.
And also we've got Christmas in May coming up, um, and it's gonna be held on Saturday, May fifth, starting at seven thirty, with a breakfast at the Guardian Agent's School Gym. And they're currently going through applications, uh, to select two or three houses to work on and one or two mobile homes. And, um, if you've never joined in and been a volunteer on Christmas in May, I would highly recommend it, it's. You come out with the best feeling, but the help that they provide these people is immeasurable, and it's just all community people donating their time.
Very satisfying.
Very satisfying. Exciting to see the, the joy it brings to the homeowners that just can't do it, and the community provides a service for them, and it's just.
Amazing to see some of the transformations of some of the homes too, you know, just that one day, I mean, it's an immediate.
It is amazing.
It's true.
You know?
Becomes a source of pride for the neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and one of the things I've always enjoyed is, is the, the mix of folks who, who come in from young kids who, you know, never used a shovel before to trade, professionals who come in and, and do some incredible work, so, yeah.
Get those football teams out there, hockey teams, the strong kids, but I like seeing parents bring their children, too, to teach them about giving and helping somebody else. Who needs the help.
What it means to live in a community.
Yep, exactly.
I'd never heard of a program like that till I moved here, so I just think it's phenomenal.
Well, it was big for a while and a lot of places just dropped it, and it's, it just always stayed active here, I think it just.
Good to say, uh, it's makes comment to the group to head it up.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, it's been a lot of the same leadership for a long time, so.
It's just amazing to me how many people show up. It's incredible, but, so it's gonna be on May fifth, starting seven thirty, so anybody interested in volunteering, please come down.
Hopefully it'll be warmer by then.
Don't say that S-word anymore. I'm tired, let's know. But I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. Alright, that's good. Alright, Quinn, this is your opportunity, what do you got, anything?
Nothing.
Alright, Matt? Nate?
Just wanted to note a couple of work sessions that was in the bi-weekly that are coming up. April sixteenth, we've got a joint park board, city council, uh, work session to take a look at the dog parks, we'll be presenting some options there, um, for both groups to consider. May fifth, we're looking at doing an OnBase training, so OnBase is a new, uh, software system that we're bringing in, um, to the city that will, in part, um. You know, streamline and automate our public meeting agenda process and putting that together.
No, May fifth, you said, right?
May fifth, yep.
Which is a Saturday.
Oh.
Cause Christmas in May is.
I clearly did a typo there.
Okay, so I wanted to ask about that.
Well, May seventh would be the date, sorry about that. Do not show up on May fifth, we will not be here.
I was having to decide, am I going to work in Christmas in May or coming for training, so.
Thanks for correcting me. May seventh, yeah, I must've been looking at May, I must've been looking at Christmas in May stuff when I was.
One time you fill it out and you mess it up.
I know, I know. My batting average is horrible. So, um, yeah, so OnBase, we'll be looking at that, another piece of OnBase is, um, it's really a doc, document record retention, uh, type program, so that's gonna bring a lot of capability and, and efficiency.
You know what we're gonna be able to do? We're gonna be able to highlight things on there that we have a question about.
Yeah.
Instead of noting on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're.
It's like the future is coming.
Yeah.
Did you spearhead this effort?
Like the present.
Did you spearhead this effort knowing about OnBase from the county?
Well, you know, I've, I've encouraged it, but I would say Denise Wetzel is really.
Fabulous, okay.
Driving force behind this.
It's a great program, yeah, okay, good.
May twenty-first, the Chaska Wayfinding signage master plan. So we're gonna be taking a look at that and presenting, you know, what we consider the final plan for that.
Yeah.
Yep, so that'll be a joint session too with, uh, the council planning commission, park board, and the Chaska Downtown Business Alliance will all be, uh, invited to attend that one, so. So that's that, and then the one other thing I wanted to point out, um, so congratulations to electric department. They received notice that they've been presented with a certificate of excellence, um, from the American Public Power Association. And that acknowledges the, the high level of reliability that our utility provides, um, they're in the top quartile of providers in the nation as a result, you know, that's what this certificate is acknowledging, so. The, that reliability is really critical, um, for us in serving our residents, but also as an economic development tool. There's a lot of industries and things that look at that and, and really value that, um, reliability, and so a lot of times that puts us over the edge, uh, when people are looking at their sites and options that they've got, so. So that's an important thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we've always known the reliability, it's nice to see them getting recognized for it.
Yep, yep.
I had that as, as something I thought that was really important to bring up, and I'm glad you did. I don't recall in my nine years here that, I, I remember them getting this, so this is, is this the first time we've achieved this? And I know you're new too.
Yeah, that's, they haven't received it since I've been here.
Chris, do you remember this at all?
No.
I, I, I mean.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't think to ask the question as to whether that's been received by, um, the department before or not, but.
That I recall.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a, that's a, a great award for our electric department, and I, you know, we take so, so much of that stuff for granted until you've been somewhere else and lived somewhere else. And been through outages and stuff like that, and, you know, a long outage for us is four hours, and a long outage for other people's can be four days, so. Um, we're pretty fortunate and I call us a little spoiled because we have, we have that ability to have that, and not a lot of cities have it. It's a small group that have that opportunity, so, congratulations to them.
Right, anything else, Nate?
That's all I've got.
Everybody stole all my thunder, so I'm done too.
Wow.
So, we have an EDA meeting, uh, immediately following, so we're gonna adjourn, and we have, uh, about a three-minute break till we get reset in the back with our. Recording, and then we'll come back on with, uh, it's just gonna be a very quick, uh, EDA meeting, so, uh. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
So I have a motion by council member Bo.
I'll second that.
Second by council member Geisler to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We are adjourned, we'll see you in a couple minutes.